Patterson. Rector.
Here.
Store. Summers. Taylor.
Here.
Thorzlin.
Here.
Tinsley.
Present.
Wolken.
Here.
Young.
Here.
Clemmons.
Here.
Clifford. Covert. Dillard Myers.
Here.
Eisenman.
Here.
Esri.
Here.
Fears.
Here.
Portato. Goss. Harper. Ingram. McGuire. Rosales.
Here. Could I get a motion for the approval of the agenda and addendum? Moved by Lorraine Coward, second by Connie Dillard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approved, could I get somebody to approve the minutes of February 11th, 2020? Moved by Jim Goss. Second by Charles Young. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Discussion. Motion carries.
Hold on, I got discussion. Wait, which one we doing, the minutes?
The minutes of February 11th. Any corrections, deletions?
Oh, yeah, hold up here, so I'm not nitpicking, but I'm curious about, why did my item policy get moved down to last on the agenda? Minutes? Oh, okay, we on minutes, we went too fast, I'm sorry. I had some question about the agenda. And also about the website. But that's, I guess it's too late, that's okay.
Okay. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public participation, I have, who wants to go first, James Kilgore?
Good evening. I have shared with you an image of the Sankofa bird. I lived in Africa for 18 years, and this is an important symbol in African culture. If you'll notice, the bird has an odd shape, its head looks backwards, but its body is poised to move forward. And I think the Champaign County Board at the moment is at a Sankofa moment. And I think the report that's going to come to you from the Community Justice Collaborative is going to reflect that process of having to know where you've been in order to figure out where you need to go, to understand your history in order to be able to construct your future. So, as I look back, and been coming out here since 2011, 2012, in these meetings, looking at the issue of the jail. And looking back over that history and over the reports, I think one of the things we can say about Champaign County, perhaps more than any county in the entire country, it has researched, it has debated, it has discussed, it has conducted every kind of thorough investigation about the problems of the jail and the criminal justice system. And I think that's something to be proud of, not to discard. And as we look back on those 10 years of the ILPP report, the Community Justice Task Force, and the debates in this chamber, a number of threads come through that we have to consider in order to figure out the way forward. So for me, there are four that struck me, and I think will be a point of emphasis in the report that's to follow. The first is that the downtown jail is a hellhole. That's not really a debate. The second is that the county has an enormous debt of deferred maintenance, which has continued to grow. The third is that the criminal legal system in this county is riddled with racial disparities, racial inequalities. And the fourth would be that there's a distinct lack of services in this county that will help keep people out of jail. So, as the Sankofa bird, as we view the past, through the eyes of the Sankofa bird, and you've been given links and copies of most of these documents, I hope that you will do that Sankofa process and think about all the things that have appeared and reappeared and provide us with the basis to move forward. And this report that you're going to hear tonight, I think is a brilliant compilation of what's come before, but also what needs to happen in this particular moment. It deals with the construction issues, it deals with the financial issues, it deals with the issues of racial disparity. And I, but I think most importantly, it deals with the issue of process. How do we finally solve this problem? And this issue of the jail, this issue of criminal legal reform, this issue of poverty, racism, and inequality is not an issue just for the county board. It's not an issue just for the county board to solve. In other communities across this country, where they have stopped jail building, where they have closed jails, places like Atlanta, where they closed, where they're closing a jail that once held 1,100 people, and the population went down to 100, and they developed a community participatory process, including elected officials, but also including people who are impacted by the jail, by the criminal legal system in the community. We need many voices to make this decision. So we need the county board to think about how it can structure a process that is going to hear the voices, not just of the architects, not just of law enforcement, those voices have a position at the table, but people in the community, particularly people who have been incarcerated, people who have had loved ones in the jail, people who are impacted by the fact that millions are being spent on a jail instead of on other things that would be much more useful to the health and peace in the community. So I hope you'll listen to this report with intensity, take it very seriously, do your own reflection, imitate this Sankofa bird, look backward in order to move forward effectively. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, James. Mark Insland?
I don't know what I can add to what James Kilgore has just said, but I am coming here to speak as a community member in favor of the proposal that that group has prepared. And I just wanted to offer to you a thought that was from my composition teacher when I studied music at the university. He, and it was kind of a subtle point, he said that there's a difference between the criteria that you use for making a choice and the alternatives that you have when you're making a choice. And what I've been seeing in some of the discussions recently is a focusing on certain things to do, and then you decide to do one thing, and it seems like chain-linked to the next thing to do, and then there's this very narrow sense of alternatives. It gets narrowed, and the criteria used to judge any alternative seems to be also narrowed, and I just like, and I think a lot of the things that are being presented are discussions of what are the criteria that we're using? And I think they should be expanded some, and including what's going to be presented in the report is also partially based on some criteria that I think would be good if we're clear about. And one is that jail is debilitating. It's a bad thing, it's not a good thing to encourage. And there are policies that are done by the county and the county board, but also by the cities and other entities that affect this. And some years ago, actually, James Kilgore spoke about the mindset that people were bringing, and a punishment mindset, which I think is not a good criterion to use, and rather a kind of a care mindset needs to be brought forth. And among your constituents are people who are in the jail right now. So what is doing right by them, I think ought to be another criterion that we bring forth for this. There's been discussion about racism and discomfort when someone feels like they're being accused. This is an accusation of a systemic situation, and it can be a criterion that I use when I'm making choices is, among them is, what is the anti-racist thing to do in this situation? And so I try to keep that in mind. And just one other thing I'll put in is that back when the county was decided, had decided to hire a company to do a review of the jail situation, and had four bids. And I was at some of the meetings in which these entities were coming to make their, propose their bid for, pay us to do that evaluation, you all chose ILPP. And one of the main reasons that they got chosen was that they said, "We're going to do a review of the entire criminal justice system of the county." It wasn't just focused on buildings and a narrow view, it was a more comprehensive view. And that is a criterion that I think also I would recommend to you is the more expansive view, and to think of the choices that you're making as within a context, and what they're going to do to make a better, actually, just a better county for us all to be living together in. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark, for your comments. Okay, next we have Bobby Trist.
Bobby Trist, Champaign. I spoke last week, so as long as we're contemplating this issue, you'll get tired of hearing from me. I am in favor of using, if we have $48 or $53 million, whatever it is that is contemplated, for building a super-duper jail, we need to spend most of that money on facilities in the community. We need a place where there's a drop-off for police to bring people who are having mental health crises. Right now, we need not only homeless beds, but we need places for people to safely shower and wash their hands and their feet. I ran into this about 10 days ago, when I was helping a homeless man and got him some shoes through an organization that I am part of. And he didn't really have any place to wash his feet. We need, yes, we need more mental health services and better medical services in the jail, but a lot of the people that are in the jail could be using services that are not behind bars. And I like to bring up the Transportation Center, which is 20 years old, or just passed its 20th birthday. That was where all the entities that have to do with transportation got together and made a very common sense place so that the Greyhound let you off, or the city bus picked you up, or the train let you off, or the taxis stopped. And we need something similar, a one-stop place where the kinds of services we need in this county can be had, so you don't need to go to jail to get mental health services. We don't need to criminalize addictive behavior. We should have medium, long, and short-term services for people suffering from addictions, which is pretty widespread right now. There are just so many ways that we can't just criminalize our way out of, out of social problems, there are other ways to deal with them. And we need to use that money for services that are urgently needed in this community. We can be a leader, we can be a trendsetter. And things are already happening, so that we're going to be using, needing fewer beds, not more, in the jail. So while there need to be some improvements and some adjustments in the jail, most of what we need needs to be outside the jail. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bobby. I did get a request from the county clerk's office that there are vendors in the audience that have a presentation. And he requested that if we could move that presentation to item 6C, if it's okay with the board, so that we will not have these vendors sit here throughout the entire meeting. Yes, Jim?
I think we've set the agenda already.
Chris?
Move to amend the agenda.
Okay, I guess we're not going to be able to do that, county clerk. So let's move forward with the first presentation, which is...
Point of order.
Pardon?
I believe that we can suspend the rules to allow for that.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
I disagree, a point of order, we've set the agenda, we voted on the agenda, we've decided to have this present, these presentations. This is part of the public's opportunity to speak, and we need to be able to have their opportunity to speak. We're in the middle of an agenda item. It's not our time to be speaking, it's theirs. It's not the clerk's time to be speaking into our meeting.
Yes, Stephanie?
There's no more public participation slips, is that correct?
No, this is the end.
So they're done, and we can definitely move to suspend the rules. I make the motion to suspend the rules, to put the item in item C.
Okay, I got a motion and a second motion from Stephanie Portato, second by Kyle Patterson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The show of hands, all those in favor? All those opposed?
We didn't have a discussion.
Motion, okay, discussion. I guess we already voted, so, great. Item A, Rosecrans Reentry Program Presentation. Motion did carry, by the way.
Am I okay? All right, I just wanted to make sure. There is a handout going around, if you can take one and pass it around, it's just a small packet that I would like you guys to reference as I highlight some... There is a packet of information going around, if you can take one and pass it around. There are some things that I would like to highlight during the presentation. You guys already currently have the report, I believe, in the minutes, and so I'll only be highlighting some things for you as it relates to program enhancements, some of the data trends, and then I'll open it up for questions. But let me introduce myself, as well as the new executive director of Rosecrans Central Illinois. My name is Misty Terhan Bell. I am the program coordinator, as well as the case manager for the Champaign County Reentry Program at Rosecrans.
And I'm Joey King, executive director of Rosecrans.
I'll go ahead and get started as you guys are passing those around. And towards the end of my presentation, I'll let our executive director make some comments and some remarks to the, to the board. But can we take a journey with me? And I know this is a little strange, but that's okay. Can you close your eyes for a second? Close your eyes, think about receiving a phone call. You've just been released from being incarcerated for God knows how long. The conviction or the cause of incarceration is not important at this particular time, but you are entering into the Champaign community as a fresh, new citizen, and things have changed. And you received a call from me stating that you or a member of your household has just been released from being incarcerated, and we have services available for you. And if you need any type of assistance, you will be receiving a letter in the mail from me, and I will be following up with you if you're interested in reentry services. And so now, can you open your eyes? You received this packet in the mail. It's a welcome letter. It's a welcome letter from Rosecrans, introducing the reentry program to you, also introducing some of the reentry resources within the county, not just Rosecrans programs, but also reentry programs that are very important programs as an individual is released into the community. These are also partners that sit around the reentry council that collaborate with us and vote on decisions as we move forward as a council. In addition to that, you will see a screening questionnaire. That screening questionnaire basically helps me to identify needs of every individual that's released from the Department of Corrections, as well as the county jail. And from that particular questionnaire or screening process, I am able to create a service plan, an individualized service plan for each individual that is interested in reentry services. It is tailored-made to those individual requests and those that, that specific individual. The last sheet that I kind of want to highlight is something new and an enhancement that I have done for the program. And that's the reentry programs pre-reentry, all the way to post-reentry, and how it kind of looks from a day-to-day operational standpoint on my behalf as a case manager, as well as a program coordinator. And so this is something that an individual will receive from me. And when they reach out and give me a call and is interested in services, I meet with them face-to-face at their home or wherever they need me to meet them at. I don't request that they come to my office, because transportation is a very huge barrier for this particular population once they're released. And I sit down and I listen to them, and basically create a roadmap for them to accomplish the things that they feel to help them produce, become a productive citizen in society, once again, before incarceration. So I wanted to take you on that journey so that you can put your feet in their shoes and understand that it's very, very, you know, challenging to navigate through all the different social systems once they are released. It's very scary, and it's very intimidating, because these processes are constantly changing, and they need assistance with navigating through them. And so that's one of the things that I assist them with. If you turn, I'm not sure what page my report is in, your meeting packet, but for this particular fiscal year, there was a lot of programs that sat around the reentry council that collaborated with the reentry program. And they were a big, huge help, you know? And they assisted me with accomplishing some of those needs for specific individual clients in the reentry program. And that's very, very important, as part of this particular grant that you fund, it is to fund not only the program itself, my job as the case manager, but also the organization of the reentry council. And there is a wealth and a huge number of organizations that have received recent funding, agencies that we are already familiar with, new agencies that have come to the table that have received funding specifically for the reentry population that assist us with addressing some of the barriers and accomplishing some of the identified needs for this particular population. And so one of the things that my report highlights is our enhancements. And one of the things was the agenda to basically understand all of the data that comes and through the criminal justice program. For example, the booking screenings, the brief general health, the brief jail mental health screenings, the TCUD screenings. All of that assists all of the programs that sit around the tables, specifically the criminal justice program, the reentry program, as well as the Fresh Start program. And we have collaborated with those programs in addition to some of the other programs that are within the, that is within the report. Some of the other programs that have presented to the council that have presented amazing information, amazing statistics. For example, the Parkland-Swift program, they came to the table and presented. We had a number of new programs, for example, the Land of Lincoln, they got reentry funds. Oh, thank you so much. Thank you, first followers, the Young Adult Reentry Program, as well as some of the new initiatives through the Housing Authority. So we've been collaborating a lot. We've met six times through the fiscal year. We've changed some of the objectives as it relates to 2020. We're very excited about that. In 2019, we presented a lot of data so that organizations sitting around the table understands what each program does, and specifically what they are funded to do. So with that in mind, we have a number of programs within our community that may not meet entirely and universally all of the identified needs as it relates to the reentry population. But I want to reinforce and let you guys know that the reentry program that you fund basically looks at all of those identified needs and basically ensures that if those identified needs are, are chosen, we ensure that we try our best to link them to those particular resources. If you look on page nine and 10, it's two numbers on here, so I'm not exactly sure which number you referenced, so two and nine, and three and 10, these are the specific identified needs that I basically cover within the program. Education, employment, housing, benefits and resources, public benefits, medical, behavioral health needs, as well as transportation, and transportation. And all of these are linked. And there are some prerequisites in order for me to accomplish some of these. For example, in order to get an ID, you have to be able to provide three official federal documents for the DMV. And that is their release papers, that is on letterhead, released from the Department of Correction as proof of their address, their birth certificate, as well as their social security card. And unfortunately, some of these individuals are released, and they don't have any of those. In order sometimes to get a social security card, you have to prove your identity first before you can even walk into the facility and request a replacement social security card. So therefore, in order for me to do that, I have to take them to some local medical facility, whether that be OSF or Carl, to get them a certified medical record to prove their identity in order to even order their replacement social security card. In order to get their birth certificate, in some counties, that cost range is between $50 to $80 sometime. And we're lucky, in Champaign County, through the county clerk's office, we're able to get free birth certificates within 30 days of individuals that are released. So that is a huge, huge benefit for us within the county. But these are just some examples of some of the barriers that I have to do for individuals that may not be from this county but are released into this county and paroled into this county. Some of the other things that I want to highlight is basically, from the last time I reported to you, last fiscal year, we reincorporated the bookings numbers, as well as the sentencing individuals that are released from the county jail. And so those numbers are with, in the report as well, too. Because we just recently began to start incorporating those numbers, we don't see any Champaign County jail numbers for 2019, but you will for 2020. So they're coming through the pipeline. I try to meet with all individuals on that sentencing report before they're released, so that they can get all the information that you received in this packet. So when they get out, they know exactly where to go, who to call, and how to navigate through certain systems within the community. So for mid-quarter report, July through December 2019, we've had 50 individuals sent to me from the Department of Corrections that's released into Champagne County. When I'm receiving an individual from that list, I call them, I put them into a engagement program where they receive a letter, they receive a call, and they are continued, followed up at least for 30 to 60 days until they reach out to me. There was 48 individuals released from the Champagne County Jail. Of those, 11 of those tested positive for the brief mental jail screening and the criminal justice program. Out of that 48, three individuals were outside of the county, so I wasn't able to provide services to them. And 33 actually received some type of correspondence from me, whether that's a call, a letter, or meeting with them within the jail prior to being released. So the numbers for the mid-quarter report is I've had 16 total service plans out of these referrals. 10 of them was from IDOC or the Department of Corrections. Six of them were just walking and have been, maybe have been released prior to the year or just in need of services. And one of the six that walked in, five were parole and one probation. And as I stated, zero from the county jail as of December 31st, 2019. Out of those 16 service plans, we've had 53 identified needs. And as you can see on page five and 12, that's the breakdown of the individual needs. And currently, right now, the large percentage of individual of identified needs is benefits and resources and medical. That's huge right now. Individuals need assistance navigating through certain required documents for employment and education, and they also need assistance around getting medical providers and managed medical care. And healthcare consumers, which sits at the table of the reentry council, assist the reentry program in helping to identify and meet and link some of those needs. The linkages that we provided for the mid, for the year from July to December was 48. And of the 48 successful linkages, as you can see, a large percent of that that we met was benefits. I've established once, once again, a process that I know how to navigate through the systems very quickly. So we're able to get those benefits within, you know, two to three weeks of being released. Behavioral health needs, we have walk-ins on a daily basis where individuals that need anger management, substance abuse, mental health assessments can walk in and also get screenings prior to going through the entire assessment process. And I provide those directly as well, too. And then also medical. So individuals that are released that need either their medical benefits reapplied or re-established upon release, we can get those things done very, very quickly. Some of the things that we have done for 2019, which were basically in the program plan that was submitted to you when we requested refunding from the program, was to attend the summit each year, twice a year, which is the Danville Correctional Summit. There was one held in November. There will be another one held this month that I will attend to basically provide resources and information to those individuals that will be released from Champagne County as well, too. Meeting on a monthly basis with the council, documenting all the meeting reports, all the decisions that have been made. And I'm very excited for 2020 because one of the things that we've done as it relates to our objectives is to strategically start addressing some of the barriers that we face with trying to identify some of these needs. And the first one we decided to do is transportation. So that's a huge, huge improvement. On page 16, that's just basically the raw data from the beginning of the program to current. But if you notice, this is the same information that was in the pie chart, the visual, the visual. And so it has it for each year. And then the last year is just basically the mid-year report, which are the raw data. Also part of the program, I calculate recidivism. And recidivism for individuals that are released and I look, I track them for three years to see if they have acquired a new judgment and have went back into the criminal justice system. And so currently, right now, we are in year six cohort. I didn't do the cumulative recidivism data because there are a lot of pending individuals that are still, that still have new cases, but the results of those cases have not come in yet. And so until they come in, I won't be able to provide specific and accurate recidivism for previous cohorts. But this is the most accurate, at least, for cohort six. So currently, right now, the way we break it up is we have individuals that have successfully completed the program, partially completed the program, and then unsuccessfully completed the program. So as it relates to recidivism individual, we are at 31% successful, 69% partial, which means that they only completed some of their linkages and they still may be in the process of completing them. Or they just decided they didn't want to, you know, to complete that particular goal at the moment or are not able to complete that particular goal at the moment. And then the last one is unsuccessful. And I have not had any unsuccessful service plans as of the beginning of the fiscal year to date. I do track individuals that engage in the program and individuals that do not engage in the program. And so currently, right now, if you look at page 11 and 18, that's the recidivism for the non-engaged for cohort six. And we're at a 13% of individuals that are not engaged that currently have new cases. And we currently have five pending of those that I'm waiting to receive the results of their cases. One of the things that I'm very excited about, which came out of a collaboration sitting around the table with the Community Coalition and CU Fresh Start, was that there is a big issue around individuals released and child support issues. And so I was able to update the questionnaire and some of the engagement material to ask if they need child support services. And I'm hoping we can begin to start tracking that individual need that the second half of the mid-quarter. So hopefully, some numbers will come in as it relates to child support. But currently, right now, we don't have any data related to child support for the first mid-quarter, first part of the mid-quarter. But I'm hoping by the second part, we're able to see some of that individual data come through. And that's very important because individuals that are released, soon as they're released, their child support obligations kick right back in. And then that prevents them from getting, you know, employment because the Child Support Office and the Human Services Department will begin to start garnishing their check as soon as they start making wages, as well as some of their driver's licenses are suspended. So there are some programs that the Child Enforcement, Child Support Enforcement Office provides and gives them that they can basically begin to start making payments and they'll waive some of their obligations and are able to receive the services they need to become productive citizens of society. So those are the highlights that I wanted to share with you as it relates to the report. And then also just to take you through a day-to-day operational look of what I do with working with these individuals. The flow chart really gives you a kind of a visual from beginning to end of how an individual may fall in any given process or in any given level within the reentry process. So at this particular time, I'll turn it over to Joe King, which is our executive director, new executive director, allow him to make any remarks that he would like, and then I'll open it up for questions for me.
I wanted to start off to say thank you for having me today. I'm looking forward to working with Misty and with this program into next year. This is a very important program for Rosecrantz. We believe in this program, support the program. So with all the work that Misty's doing at the initial point, we do hope that if anything throughout the process that were to occur, that any of the clients would see Rosecrantz as a safe place that could help with any roadblocks. Even after Misty's work is done, he'll be a safe place of familiar face where we'll have mental health services, addiction services, and obviously Misty will be a safe place for them to go. Misty has built a committee here in the community that's collaborated on a lot of, on a lot of different services. And he's knowledgeable and he's brought the committee together. The committee does meet. So I think that just the initial linkage part and the contacts that we have made, the success rate will continue to be, to be high with this program.
We'll open it up for questions if anyone has any questions for me.
Stephanie?
On page 17 slash 10, where it says in the bowl number that from June 1st to December 31st, 2019, that there have been 388 service plans completed and 381 unduplicated, those are individuals in that timeframe?
Yes, those are individuals. So what happens is every fiscal year, an individual may be referred but was referred the year prior to them. So I can't count them again because I have to track recidivism for three years.
So, so my follow-up question is, it seems if this year we've had 16 plans, and I get that it's only half of, half of the year, but that seems like a slower rate than in previous years. By my math, for four, for five and a half years, it's been about 70 per year? And then it seems like this is less than half of what the average is, or like, you know what I mean, if you aggregate it out? So is there a reason for what seems like a drop-off in number of plans that have been completed?
Yes, it is. And that's actually an excellent question. I brought that up to the council several times. And what we've basically been able to identify is last year, I don't think we actually had a mid-year report. I think our third quarter report was a result of when I came onto the position and sent out like 200 letters at a time, and then we got an influx, influx of individuals calling me and requesting services. So that number was very, very high. The reason why this number is a little bit low is because one of the things that I'm beginning to see is that individuals that are actually a part of the 16 may not have been on the weekly list that I get. And they may wait to receive services. There's been a high turnover currently right now in the parole office. So individuals, like I said, may not be on my list, but come through the parole office because they have parole stipulations and things like that. There was a specific contact in the parole office that would give them my information that I just gave you. And when that's not done, I believe we had two months of this current fiscal year that because that wasn't done and I was doing data analysis and things like that, and I wasn't able to send this out, no one contacted me for those months. So in, in, in this referral engagement process that I'm doing is very crucial to this program. If we don't reach out to them, they're not going to reach out to us unless their parole officer makes them reach out to us or jail staff contacts me and accesses me or they request to meet with me prior to them being released. Sometimes it's a negative, you know, stigma to come in and receive services. So unless I go out and get them, they won't come out. But that was an excellent question. We discussed that quite, quite a bit.
Charles?
So it's not a question, just more of a comment and a compliment. So I take my hat off to you and your sidekick there for doing the work that you do. I understand that even when I was at the Banjo Education, we have some, students came in with criminal background records and they had some issues. So, and I know it's tough. So I just want to commend the work that you guys do. Keep on pushing on. You have my back. I have your back, I should say. We should have each other back. I think last time you presented, I did reach out to you. If any kind of way I can be that solo artist to try to twist some of these people, board members' arm on this board, please let me know. So I'm here for you. But I understand the work and I really appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Charles. Any additional questions for Mr. Bell? From the board?
Oh, yes, Jody. Oh. I'm sorry, Kyle. You're next. Jody and then Kyle.
Hi, Mr. Bell. Thank you for your work. That is, it's super important and I'm very grateful that you're doing it. It's a lot of hard work, a lot of hours. And I am just curious, and I'm thankful that it's so successful, these 16, and you might not have it with you tonight, but I'm just curious, what is the success rate out of the 388? Like, do you have that?
I actually do have that. I just didn't provide you the cumulative. And the reason for that is because we have so many pending right now. And so I want to give you a more accurate percentage because the pending will basically not be included into the recidivism data until their conviction comes in or the results. And the thing about that...
Can you bring the mic a little closer, Mr. Bell? This is for the audience and the recording as well. That's why you need to speak clearly into the mic.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The thing about that is they, sometimes a lot of their cases are dismissed. And then I can't count them as, as, as recidivating. So, I mean, that's a plus for me, but, you know, I want to be as accurate as possible. I don't want to give you any kind of skewed data. So that's why I waited to, to provide the cumulative data.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for waiting, Kyle.
Thanks for coming out tonight, guys. Do you track how many of your participants are homeless?
I don't specifically track that. And the reason why is because from IDOC, they are supposed to be paroled to a specific address. And I actually can't get their ID unless they have proof of address. For individuals that are released from the county, a lot of them are homeless. I believe that there is a tracking system currently right now, and we've been talking about that on the council level, about individuals coming in that are homeless but are receiving services from a variety of agencies within the community. Those, we can provide a waiver for them to get their IDs, but they have to use the Daily Soup Kitchen's address. So, I mean, they're homeless, but then from the DMV standpoint, they're really not homeless because they're using an I, an address, so.
Do you, so when you list that people had housing needs, what are those needs typically if, like, a lot of them are homeless per se?
So individuals that need housing specifically that, you know, are either at, you know, Phoenix or Daily Soup Kitchen, we are trying to get them in either some type of halfway house quickly, some type of recovery home quickly, some type of transitional home quickly. But currently, right now, to be completely honest, they are, they have a routine. I mean, they don't really have a place to stay. They're staying in a shelter. Their morning routines are going to the Daily Soup Kitchen, getting their mail, checking their mail, eating, and at the library or the public places within the community. And housing is a big challenge right now. And so I know we have the Housing Authority sitting at the council, and I know some new initiatives are coming down the pipeline. We do have the Salvation Army sitting at the table. I think currently, right now, their housing funds are frozen right now just because of funds, you know, the availability of funds. But those are individuals that I pull on to try to get into a program immediately when they, when I see dire, critical housing needs like that. Some of the parole needs that come through, they're just living with mama and don't want to be at mama's house, you know? You know, quote unquote, you know? And so they're looking for more independent housing. And I don't treat those as urgent requests. I do track them, but I don't treat them as immediate housing needs at the moment because they do have an address that they're, they're resigning at.
What are, for your stats from June 2014 through December 2019, parole RIs?
So those, so currently, right now, what I get is I get a weekly parole release list from the parole office, from everyone that is supposed to be released into Champagne County. Now, the... Now, the challenge to that is there's state and there's federal parole. So we have state at the la- at the table, but we don't have federal. So I think some individuals that may not be on the list may be categorized as federal, some, some of those walking in, and some of those that, um, I'm not able to track all the way back to some type of initial name that came through.
It seems in the past two years, there's been a pretty big drop-off of the, uh, parole RIs. Do you know why that is?
Um, from my understanding, um, I was, um, not over this particular program during that, those times, um, but I believe they received some type of federal money. The program was more bigger and robust and providing much more services and linked, like, to, um, research that was given by the university and things like that. So it was a lot more entities sitting at the table, providing names and things like that. So currently right now, honestly, the only, um, as I would say, input that I get as it relates to referrals is just right now, the parole release on a weekly basis, um, and then also, um, the county, um, the Champaign County sentencing report. Those other numbers that you see that are high in quantity, they were receiving referrals from other sources.
What, what were those other sources?
Um, for example, the Criminal Justice Program, the bookings, those numbers are included in past years because it was a collaborative program.
Uh, what was that?
Like, the book, any, every individuals that, that's, um, comes through the county jail is booked. And so, um, they have to do the T-cuts and the brief jail, jail mental health screening. Those numbers are included in previous years.
So, and so this is for the parole? And I, I think you said the economic referrals?
Right, so I, so what wound up happening is I had to change the name. It was, used to just be like intakes or referrals. Um, and so once I took over the program, I only got, um, paroles. So it was always just one number prior to me picking up the program, and it had all of the referrals from, you know, county jail, parole, probation, all of those numbers were included into that big number. Um, I don't have to break out to those, so I just kept the numbers consistently from year to year until I took it over and was able to break it out.
Good, thanks.
If that's clear, sorry.
Are there any further questions from the board? Well, potentially.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for putting this together and presenting this to us this evening. Um, for the cases that are pending, um, if their, if their cases were to get thrown out or dismissed, do you still offer resources and services to them?
Yes, we do.
Any further questions? Well, thank you very much, Mr. King and Mr. Bell, for, uh, presenting to us today. Uh, you have a arduous task ahead of you, especially when they're released and there's no housing availability. And I'm glad that you have many sitting around the table. Do you have any faith-based organizations? Cause I do believe they have some limited housing abilities to cover some of those individuals.
We do have, is, I'm, I'm not sure if I would categorize them as faith-based.
Faith-based, yes.
I mean, um, so I know Ann's house sits around the table. I'm not sure if she's faith-based or not. Um, I do know, um, that part of my reentry resource guide, I can pull on faith bases. So, for example, like individuals that have safe houses, halfway houses, things like that, I have a list of those. They may not come specifically to the table. Uh, we do have Jesus is the Way, or Jesus is the Way Ministry. They, um, are active attendees every single month, so I, I guess I would consider that faith-based, um, you know? Um, so the individuals that are ten monthly, the numbers are few, but we do have the entire resource of all faith-based organizations that we can link them to if needed, um, and then if they're interested.
Well, thank you very much for coming out tonight and sharing that information with us. And, um, are there any further questions before I dismiss this presentation in Rosecrans from the board? None? Okay, well, thank you. You all have a good night.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Rosales.
Thank you for coming out.
Members of the board. Just a moment before we actually, uh, my name is Carol Ammons. I live in Urbana, uh, four oh five North Abbey Road, just around the corner. Before we actually start our actual presentation, I just wanna make a couple announcements. Uh, on tomorrow evening at six PM, the CU Public Health State Senator Scott Bennett and my office will host a collaborative, uh, virtual town hall update on the coronavirus will take place tomorrow evening. It is not gonna be held as a public event. It's gonna be a virtual event, therefore mitigating, uh, a lot of people having to come together, uh, and that will be at six PM. So if you want to follow the, um, information that's gonna come from our Director of Public Health here at Champaign County, uh, you can do that by going to my Facebook page, State Rep. Carol Ammons, on Facebook, and it will be live there. Uh, and so the announcements from our public safety, uh, people will be done, uh, virtually tomorrow evening at six PM. I also want to, um, as part of my responsibility here tonight, uh, as a member of the Community Justice Collaborative, which I'll introduce to you all, I wanna start this introduction by way of sharing with you the, uh, snippet of the executive summary and one of the points that will come out as scheduled, as we talked when I was here last, from the Supreme Court. It is scheduled to be released April of two thousand and twenty. I wanna read a couple of sentences from that report, uh, as we introduce this Community Justice Collaborative report that you all have received. And the Supreme Court from the executive summary says, "The Supreme Court's directive places Illinois among the leaders in the national movement to rethink and improve effective and fair bail practices, decisions, to ensure that defendants released pre-trial are monitored appropriately and that detained defendants are screened regularly for release eligibility and to safeguard individual rights and public safety. This movement has arisen because studies have shown that individuals held in jail before trial, even for a short period of detention, have worse outcomes such as higher risk of, uh, unemployment, higher rates of sentencing disparities, and a greater likelihood of reoffending. Although much attention has been focused on whether bail decisions place an overreliance on financial conditions for the control of release, transformative pre-trial practices reform must," and they have it italicized, "address all elements of an effective pre-trial system." And the last point from the Supreme Court, which is really critical to what you're about to see in this presentation, uh, "Under preventative detention, the pre-trial detention should be permitted only for arrestees charged with defined violent offenses. Clearly defined eligible net, eligibility net, eligibility net set forth by statute, narrowly drawn in design, and intentionally in its implementation should trigger a detention decision-making procedure. The eligibility net should be limited to enumerated offenses issued by statute only as violent." The release of this report will clarify the position of the Supreme Court, which they will, uh, determine what their judges do after this report is released. But why is this important for you all to know? The Community Justice Collaborative is a collaborative of multiracial, multiethnic, as well as, uh, multi-group combinations, including CU Citizens for Peace and Justice members. We have members that were with, uh, bill programs, not jails. We've spanned it a span of almost fifteen years working on this kind of initiative. And because this initiative, as Mr. Kilgore mentioned in his public comments earlier, this initiative has drawn the attention again of the citizenry of Champaign County, it is incumbent upon us to understand that citizens have a role to play, always, in the decisions that elected officials make. And as the board decides what to do, it cannot make this decision in the vacuum of this room. And so the Community Justice Collaborative formed itself, again, made up of citizens, so that we can take what is our duty and responsibility as citizens of Champaign County to look at what has gone before us, what reports have been generated, and what did we learn from those efforts? And so tonight, we are presenting to you, uh, an official report only drawn from recommendations, not that we've created ourselves or engineers that we've hired, but engineers that have been hired, experts hired by the county itself, and all of those reports have been examined and compiled in this report. Let me just remind you, and I'll come back at the closing, that we have an opportunity before us as a county to determine what the scope the county has as the responsibility of elected officials. We are not bound by any rules as a county to only focus on the jail, only focus on the courthouse, only focus on the county complex. The county is its people, and we have an ability, if we so prioritize, to invest in things that are beyond just the county seemingly per view. And that may include issues of housing, that may include issues of, uh, healthcare, which some counties have county health facilities. That also may include public uses like parks and recreation. And this morning, being able to attend the statewide parks recreation, I learned that with as little as two point five million dollars, we can provide a facility right here on the county complex in partnership with Urbana Park District to provide facilities of recreation for a community over here that sits right here in the midst of this county building that does not have recreational facilities available. That's something the county could do if the county decided that it's their goal. And so with that, I will turn it over to Ms., Dr. Dottie Vera Weiss, who will continue the presentation of the Community Justice Collaborative Report.
Thank you. The, um, group that we have here, uh, as you probably know, cause I've been here so many times, I am a family physician. I'm retired now, um, and I'm, um, I've been involved in keeping an eye and trying to learn more about what's been going on with the jail since I moved here, uh, in the fall of two thousand and thirteen. So I've been here since most of these various reports, um, were written. And the presentation on the, the screen is, um, just a small part of what's in the whole booklet that we've handed out. So we really encourage you to take the time to read all of it. We're trying to make it much more accessible to all of you. The facilities challenges that you face, uh, this is really an opportunity to kind of take hold of some of these things and turn things around. But one, one problem that's existed in the past has been the over-incarceration and the overcrowding that, um, was present in the jails. And in the past, that actually has been addressed by shrinking the jail population so that the same space is not overcrowding. Um, the deplorable downtown jail condition was noted in the two thousand and eleven report by the National Institute of Corrections, and that's, people still describe it the same way. The satellite jail lacks appropriate space for programs, meetings, and separation. Now, those are things that are, um, really important to take care of because the jail should not be a place that's just punishing people by restricting their freedom. If they're gonna be there, if they are determined to need to be there, there should be opportunities for them to get better, not get worse. Um, another challenge is that the jail space building is exceedingly expensive, and it's threatening to be one of the things that sinks the county financially. So let's not do it, not do it on the scale that's been proposed. The deferred maintenance costs have built up over many years, and if we can save what's, uh, being planned for the jail, that can be used to address all of those things, uh, the deferred maintenance bit by bit. And finally, to remember that the, um, time that would be needed for building a new jail between the possibility of a referendum, getting detailed plans, and the actual construction is really four years away. And there's a lot of people who believe that that downtown jail needs to be vacated, um, either immediately right now or on very short notice, um, when some decision is made. And so the short-term goal is to find an interim solution that, um, will be able to, uh, deal with the immediate problems and also is financially feasible. But the long-term solution should be a strategic and collaborative and actionable plan to shrink the overall footprint of the facilities of the whole county. There's much more space in a lot of the buildings than is being used effectively. And address the deferred maintenance and be able at some point to switch over, uh, to addressing human needs more. And I would say that that point is actually now to addressing the human needs. If we look at the, um, a timeline, back in nineteen eighty, the downtown jail was constructed. Nineteen ninety-six, the satellite jail was constructed. And then starting in two thousand and eleven, there's been this cluster of reports by National Institute of Correction, Institute for Law and Policy Planning, um, Community Justice Task Force, uh, and then the, um, architects, uh, reports on what could be done. And unfortunately, the architects were told, "What do you think we should do?" And architects, and, and weren't given a price tag of what we could afford. And architects, being architects, wanna make the greatest possible thing. And so they planned for, um, a large, beautiful, in some, um, manners of speaking, but a large building increased from what it was before. And when the county tried to get a, um, tax to pay for it, it failed seventy to thirty. So there are a lot of other things that have gone on that are, um, indicated there. And in the red, um, number two thousand and twenty, that's where we are right now. And coming up, as, um, Representative Ammons said, there are gonna be new recommendations from the State Supreme Court, and the legislature is in the process of changing what's required and what's available to us, uh, so that it's really a moving target in terms of what we're gonna be dealing with. And the earliest time that the, um, facility could be available would be in two thousand One of the other things that's been mentioned and is very concerning is the inequity in terms of the racial population in the jail. The percent of the, um, intakes at the jail, I believe it's about fifty-five percent of the people are, about fifty-five percent of the people who are booked into the jail are, are black, whereas the population in the county is about fourteen percent black. And the, um, many things that are contributing to that are the, um, a lot of poverty issues, a lot of discrimination issues, and lack of resources that have been compounded, um, over the years and over the generations. Okay? And so that, that's a really important piece of the issue to deal with. Good evening. Thank you, Dottie. My name is Danielle Shaniewith, and I'm the Cunningham Township Supervisor. Um, I work with the homeless and near homeless in Urbana. We work with about a thousand residents per year. Um, first off, I just wanna say for the listening audience that you can find this entire report on the Build Programs Not Jails website. So for folks who wanna follow along, you can just Google Build Programs Not Jails.
So for folks who want to follow along, you can just Google Build Programs Not Jails. So I want to talk a little bit about financial feasibility or infeasibility. Essentially, there's three options for financing, and each change, big or small. One is a sales tax, or some kind of tax, sales or property. The second would be a bond, and the third would be out of general operations. So I'm going to speak to the two, because the third is not objectionable to this group. So the first is, as Dottie explained, in 2016, the plan that was sold to voters was $18 million. This plan included 282 beds, including 30-bed medical unit, gender and safety separation, a new booking area, and family contact visitation area. Please look at your 2016 Facilities Action Plan from your county administrator that outlined that $18 million plan. At that time, the public considered that too high, and even though it was sweetened with promises of nursing home support and a detox center, it failed miserably, 70 to 30. So why are we looking at a $47 million plan with only one more bed and a few more amenities? That jump, if you go from 2017 to 2022, which is what the architect says, the financing, the $47 million is for a 2022 build, this jump represents a 21 and 1/2% annual increase during that time. At the Facilities Committee, the architect explained that typically you can expect a 4% annual increase. I think you need to ask why it's such a huge jump. If you can't do a referendum, which I don't think would be a meaningful proposition at a time when both parties are trying to showcase criminal justice reform, then you can consider bonding. But why would you? The annual debt service alone could cost $3.8 million, when moving people to area jails will be less than $1 million. And in the report, you can see that clearly articulated where we get both of those numbers. It makes no sense for you to do a bond if you could actually just pay to export, and that's based on the last three years of data. You have a decreased population, so you could potentially realize less than $1 million of expense. And in fact, in our report, if you go past the functional capacity, which you regularly do at this point, you're seeing more in the hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. So I next want to talk about opportunity costs. If you could just change the slide, please. So budgets reflect values. So the decision to invest in punishment and confinement over other areas of governance sends a signal to the public about the priorities of this county board. This is not the priority for the majority of voters in this community, as we have seen time and again with the way these voters vote. The Facilities Action Plan of 2016 explains that you will be debt-free 2028, and it says, quote, "Revenues previously dedicated to satisfying debt service would become available for possible reallocation to programs." 2028 is that date that we want to see, that we can start building programs together, you get out from under some of the bonds that you have. And if you saddle us with debt or cost overruns, then it eviscerates those opportunities. So, as you can see, the poverty rate in Champaign County has gone up with some notable spikes. Champaign County is the top, Illinois is the bottom, and the national is in between. Meanwhile, let's look at crime rates. Violent crime rates have precipitously dropped. Yes, there's an increase in gun violence in our community, and we should address that, and there are many groups doing that. But if you look at overall violent crime rates, we're seeing a reduction. So these data points show the poverty more so than crime should be the primary concern and investment of county officials. You can be a powerful agent for positive action in the community when you have vision, plan, and funds to do so. I just want to note that this is the month that homeless shelters close. 4.4% of the jail bookings are for people who are street homeless. Our organization, Township, FOIA'd the information and was able to put together a report, which I'd be happy to show you, to show what a large burden on the jailing and the booking comes from the homeless population. These people, I want to also mention, are the most vulnerable to the virus and have no refuge. They have no place to go. Next slide, please, this will be my last slide. So I want to, my last point, my, I want to talk about facilities, maintenance, and operational cost burdens. The Bailey Edwards Report, which you paid for in 2015, observed over $25 million in deferred maintenance. Now, that did include $5 million for the nursing home, but it's also 5 million years old, or five years old. And the report indicates that you have to do a $5.6 million annual investment from that time, just to not sink further. So this graph, this is what actually terrified me when I started looking at your reports. I'm sure Stephanie is looking at you, because I know you were Chair of, you were Chair of the Finance Committee. But looking at this, your green is your spending, right? Your blue is your deferred maintenance backlog. Your red line is the condition of your properties, and going up is not good. It means it's, it's bad if that line goes up, right? And so you have a situation that this is your problem. This is your crisis. The downtown jail is a portion of that. We want to be partners in addressing that. We want you to close the downtown jail. This is the bigger issue you have to deal with. If, so this proposal that you're considering, although it reduces beds, increases your jail footprint from 32,000 square feet between both jails to 55,600 square feet, it's a 74% increase. It is a huge, if you've seen the picture, it's a huge increase, and you have the power and utilities and maintenance that comes with that. You could conclude from this that you simply need more money, but not so. The county is overbuilt and underutilized spaces with vacancies in the original nursing home. The new nursing home was overbuilt, which is one of the reasons that it, it kind of collapsed under its own weight. And the juvenile detention facility is, runs well under capacity most of the time. The downtown jail is typically under 2/3s capacity, and there's, of the maximum capacity, and there are vacancies at the Brookins Administrative Center. In fact, your own plan says that the staff that you have here at the Brookins should fill 20,000 square feet of space. This is, if, if that staff fills 97,000 square feet of space, because of all the hallways and all the spaces, it doesn't need to occupy this size. This is one of the places where you could start shrinking. The Facilities Action Plan, I just will quote, and I will end with this, that suggests, and if you could go to the next slide, that the county reuse or eliminate underused spaces and construct renovated remodel facilities only to the extent that is absolutely necessary to serve the current requirements. Your plan did not meet this criteria. It says we should pursue medium-term facilities that establish a bridge to the future and avoid excessively large investments that may not provide value to the future. So this was said before bail bond reform, and it says, "Facilities should be made with a conservative philosophy because of changing demographics in the jail." So I am just quoting back to you some of the things that you were set as your own goals. And with that, I will pass it to Jane to take the next step.[1128.75][1128.75](APPLAUSE).
Hello, good evening. My name is Jane McClintock. I'm a lifelong Urbana resident and am a building efficiency and energy consultant, and I have a master's degree in architecture. When I heard about the, the plan and the changes that have been occurring in the criminal justice system, I got interested in understanding the architectural plan. So I'd like to speak a little bit about some of the assumptions and logic that underlies that plan, and then kind of walk you through a thought experiment of what if we updated some of those assumptions to what we're seeing now, today, and going forward into the future. So I'd like to first point out, as many of us are aware, that the last, that from 2012 to 2019, we've saw, seen overall a 30% reduction in the jail population. So these are average, averages for each year, and then 30% is the slope of that line between 2012 and 2019. So we're already seeing a trend towards population reduction. And so, given this, I was interested in looking at what the daily jail populations have been since the Rife-Stech report compared to the daily jail populations, which the architects were looking at and researching in order to make that master plan that we're now looking at in 2019. They published in 2015, and the data they used is from 2019 to 2014. So on the left here, you can see this is from the master plan of the jails, and then on the right is a recreation using numbers from the sheriff's office from 2016 to January of this year. And you can see that we've dropped precipitously. So the lowest levels of population in the Rife-Stech days are now pretty average, and even the peaks. We had a really high peak in 2017, and that is only really touching the sort of averages of the era that the architect was using to create this plan. And I think echoing in a way what Mr. Ensland was saying, the assumptions and the lens through which we, you know, start to contemplate a problem are going to have a strong impact on the design. So if we try to, if we look at what's coming in the future, we can kind of try to imagine what we would want to design for, taking into consideration not only the reductions of the last four years, but also the anticipated reductions that we see from these state-level reforms. Can I have the next slide, please? So one way to look at this is considering that bail bond reform and pretrial is something that's, that is an imminent reality on the state level, and also something with our sheriff and our county, and much of our constituents and neighbors are, you know, looking forward to and excited about. I tried to look at what, what kind of a reduction can we expect from our jail population looking towards bail bond reform? And so then, this is showing a simulation of a 28% reduction based on the, if you look at daily jail populations, it's about 28% of the unsentenced population that have bonds under $25,000. So folks who have very low amounts to get out of jail, if those people were freed, we'd see a 28% reduction. And this population is shown in relation to two lines. The horizontal lines represent some realities about the satellite jail, and these, these numbers are from the Rife-Stech report. The architects took a lot of time to understand the sheriff's classification system and also the physical conditions of the satellite jail, and they came up with a total capacity, a total number of beds in the jail, which is 182. That's the top line, and then that lower line is what the architect determined to be based on both like, the number of, like, facilities in the jail, like plumbing facilities and space, and also the classification needs of the correctional staff. So based on how many people they can comfortably house in the jail, the preferred maximum population is 141. So as we look at this population, we see that we're very rarely, given bail bond reform, we're very rarely over the ideal number of people that we would want to have in the jail. If we were to take the, those occasional peaks and were to house those folks out of county, it would only cost the county about $125,000, as you can see the details of that in the report. And I think we can move on to the next slide. This is quickly, just for the sake of a holistic view of it, if we took another way of estimating bail bond reform, we could look at what other states have done. For example, in New Jersey, when they eliminated cash bail, they saw a 48, 4% reduction. So by the same logic, we could look at the last few years of jail population with the unsentenced population reduced by 44%. So this is not reducing at all the sentenced population, this is just the unsentenced population. And you see that we're always well under that ideal capacity of the satellite jail. Yeah, so both of these charts, that's a good point, Danielle, thanks for saying that. Both of these charts are imagining if we had closed the downtown jail in 2016, what would our population have looked like in comparison to just the satellite jail if we had these reductions from bail bond reform? So this is a way of kind of looking forward. If we instituted bail bond reform and closed the downtown jail, would we be able to stay under the ideal capacity of the jail? So I think with that, I just, I guess, that for me, I think the biggest takeaway is that the, the assumptions that we go into the problem with are going to determine the kind of designs and the kind of solutions that we come out of it with. If we look at it as, what do we have already? What are, what do we have in our existing facilities? I think we can find pretty easily some relatively simple solutions for finding the spaces that we need in our satellite jail. For instance, Rife-Stech has thought of a, I think, wide and nice design for having professional meeting spaces in what is currently a large storage space for personal belongings. We see in the NIC report of 2011 that they suggest modular buildings for program spaces and even dormitories. So considering that report again, and perhaps even using modular buildings for storage and doing more important, doing more important things inside of the jail, like program space and professional meetings. So with that, I'll pass it to Carol for conclusion.[1593.38][1593.38](APPLAUSE).
I think, I think the 30 minutes for presentation time is over.
Pardon?
There's 30-minute time for presentation, and that's over.
Okay, could we wrap it up then?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. We, we just have a couple of closing thoughts for the board, if you would indulge us for a few additional amendments.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think, I think our agenda time's already been determined. I thought, I thought when the discussion was made.
Point of order, are there any time allotments on the agenda?
Let them finish it, Jim.
We've already changed agenda once without, which I'm going to call for.
You're out of order, Jane.
Question of order.
Totally understand, Jim, but let them finish, please.
We will be quick. There's just a couple of final points. We wanted to, first off, say that, just to get to our proposals, which is probably the punchline you've been waiting for, we believe that you can immediately contract with area jails and must, in all of the scenarios you're looking at, you will need to do this contracting. If you were to start a major building project, if you were to have a viral outbreak in Champaign County, if you were to have various things happen, you're going to need to contract with area jails. There's a number of examples of that throughout the state. Dottie is just going to mention a few things about the pretrial program, and then Jane will just wrap up with a scenario of what it could look like.
Okay, a pretrial program means a number of the things that actually have been mentioned as part of the, the reentry program that Rosecrance is doing, which means connecting people with resources in the community that they're going to need. But what people have usually thought of as pretrial is evaluating the people that are in jail and deciding whether or not it's safe for them to be out in the community, and ending cash bail because that puts a financial barrier to them. And so one of the things that we should do is set up some kind of a pretrial program that's not what was tried five years ago, I guess, where it was put in place only for six weeks and didn't really meet most of the criteria for a reasonable pretrial program. The sketch shows in Santa Clara County, they, at the time of booking, people were in the waiting area and just where they were being booked, they would meet with a pretrial services staff person, some of those issues would be resolved. The judge makes up a decision based on the information that's collected, whether the person is staying in jail to have a full hearing about whether they should be kept in jail, or whether they go out into the community, and whether they need any, to meet any conditions like calling in every week or coming in every week. And the pre- And the pretrial services staff also connect them with things like the public benefits that were mentioned before. And that's one of the things that needs to be discussed. There are some portions of this sketch that don't apply here because when this was designed, they still had bail bondsman in there. And so they also had the alternative, you know, the just asking about the pretrial services instead of the bondsman that was out in the community there. So that's, one section is ending the cash bail as soon as possible, but in the meantime, following the 2017 Bail Bond Reform Act and reviewing in a couple of days if somebody's still in jail. But we want to get the pretrial services program. And if there is still bail, then considering whether it wouldn't be less expensive for the county to pay the bail for those low expenses, low-level offenses, if the, if the judges are continuing to impose bail. The other related reforms would be increasing the possibility of the police not bringing someone to be booked into the jail, but instead giving them a citation, a ticket, and a notice to appear in court. And also, instead of those people who have been sentenced and are in the jail, have them do community service so that they're not taking up a bed and a space in the jail that we need to reserve for people that absolutely have to be there. And then these other, many recommendations of the Community Justice Task Course and Racial Justice Task Course have not yet been implemented.
So I'll just give my final comments. Let me just say to the board members, as an elected official, it is incumbent upon you, notwithstanding your long schedules and late nights, and I know what that's like, to heed the call of a citizen group who would take the time to do what you are witnessing right now. That is very, very good advice to every elected official regardless of party. The last thing I will say from the conclusion that you will see in the Supreme Court Commission's report, and I'm gonna quote it for you, there may be many who review the Commission's report, or even this report, and the significant recommendations which support a seismic shift in the way we do business and say, wow, that's aspirational, that's great, certainly not attainable. At first blush, that might appear to be true, but sweeping state reforms can be achieved as well as on the county level. As demonstrated by New Jersey, a jurisdiction that underwent sweeping reform to overhaul its criminal justice system, comprehensive reform can only be successful if all of the branches of government work together to do that. Strong and deliberate legislation, which we are working on, clear and very clear directives for court rules, adequate and sustainable funding at the state and local level is essential to reform our system. And so I would implore you to take seriously what we've put before you as our volunteer architect, went through all of your reports for you. Please do not take this lightly, regardless to how you may view this issue. The jail itself is only one facility of many that the county's responsible for, and this report gives you a really good way to start a collaborative process. Thank you all for allowing me to participate.
Thank you very much, Representative Bowman, Honorable Danielle Shanathwaite, Jane McIn, McIn, MacIntuck, McClintock, and Vera Weiss for your presentation and your hard work in presenting this to us. I will forward this to the Facilities Committee because there's, we're trying to work both programs and the facilities proposals together. So I would forward that to both the county exec and others that could influence in this project. Thank you very much for coming out tonight, and thank you very much for this presentation. Yes, Jim?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for coming. I have some questions because, Dottie, I know you were here when the sheriff was talking about the jail and its facilities. I'm glad that people understand that we need to close the downtown jail. You touched on the fact that it was gonna be, a few years ago was $18 million. Now the price is gonna be $47 million. Obviously, the only thing we can do is do bonds to fix this issue with the downtown jail. The fact that we need to close the downtown jail, you touch on a couple of different issues, which I'm interested in, that you cited a couple of different times the costs if we close the downtown jail and have to move people out of the county. And the jail, the sheriff, you were here, Dottie, said that it would cost $1.4 million. You didn't, you, your, the number you quoted was significantly less. The other thing that he stated, which neither, none of you stated, and I wonder if you agree with, that many of the people that are in our jail, other counties won't take because of the crimes that they've committed. What do you think about that issue? How would you address that? Let's just start with that question. Yeah.
Thank you. So first off, if you look at the report, we always provide citations, and I did hear Dustin explain, I think he said 1.5 million, but it might have been 1.4. If you look at the document that was provided to the county board that projects both the 47 million plus transition costs, in that document, you'll see a line item that says 40 folks from the downtown jail, 365 days of the year to export them out of the county. So that assumes that you need 40 people 365 days of the year. What we did and what Jane's projections show is actual averages of folks, the, the number of days you, if you had had to close the downtown jail several years ago, how many actual days you would have had to move people out of the jail to be under that 141 functional capacity. So essentially, what we're showing you is that, is a much more representative number. He's showing you worst-case scenario, which makes sense because you probably want to aim high in case it's that. But I think the number that we provide is more realistic because it assumes that you're not gonna have people out the entire time. The second question, I would encourage you, well, first off, I think there are other counties like Cook County in particular, who before their bail bond reform exported folks from their jails on a regular basis. And there were numerous places where they were housed. And as you can look at the documentation, oftentimes there were significantly, significant violent crimes in those cases. So what we would actually encourage you to do, and of course, I'm not, I'm, my background is not in criminal justice, but I think a question to ask the sheriff is, if you have someone whose family is not in Champaign County, or they are not from Champaign County, or they're from Rantoul, or a place that might actually be closer to an area jail, could we prioritize the housing of folks if you are over your functional capacity and there are concerns? Could you house folks in places where it's not gonna be an impact to their families? So I'd encourage you to have that conversation, those, where those numbers come from.
Well, we, we've had the conversation with the sheriff many times. And we can't just assume that that will work. Once the jail is gone, it's gone, and these people are on the street, and we already have enough crime on the street, as you've suggested. And these people, the families, don't really want to travel to another location. And you didn't address the classification issue of the jail and how we separate the 40 or 70 people, including women, or mental, mental health issue problems that are created from that. And, and, and the wait that would cause to wait another three or four years to build the jail, which would be another, another $20 million for the public to pay in tax money. And that, those funds aren't available the other way. Let me address a couple of the issues too. You talked about bail bonds, doing away with bail bonds. And I, I don't know what the Supreme Court's gonna do. We aren't responsible for those issues in, in the county. Those are totally responsibilities, the legislature, the courts, pretrials are responsibilities of the courts. It's not, not the county. We are responsible for the jail and providing, and providing the safety for the, for the people of the county. The Sheriff's Association's come out against bail bonds, bail reform. They said that the bail bond reform that was done last year, which we know about, just paid $30, $30. The sheriff of McDouly County has said that it actually made the, the process worse, that it tripled the number of failure, failure to, to appear. I'm not in, I'm not here to make it worse for people, to give them more charges. The News Gazette's come out against bail reform, bail bond reform. You can laugh if you want to, but New York is having a major problem with their, their bail reform. We really don't have anybody in our jail. Everybody talks about incarcerating a significant population over what we, we have in the jail. When, when, when the sheriff was here, there is no people that smoke pot and, and jaywalk in our jails. We have significantly dropped that number. We have reentry. You expect, you expect to cut, to drop the number of, of people in the jail by 28%, that number is not there. Where, where does it come from?
I just want to be clear that our participants from township are regularly in the jail. We track that on a daily basis, and it's almost always petty theft, trespass, disorderly conduct, and they are in the jail. I see their booking photos every day, and I can guarantee you that those folks are in the jail. But I'll let Carol respond to some of the bail.
If they were, if they were there, they're there and out. They did not.
It's because they don't have $10, $100.
That's not true.
So let me just clarify that we do have counties that have pretrial services at the county level already, just not all 102 counties in, in the state of Illinois. So, that's not necessarily factual. But let me suggest to you that everything that we presented here is cited from your reports. It's cited from your reports. We didn't make up any of it. It is cited from your reports. And lastly, bail reform, and I agree that the Sheriff's Association is opposed to any kind of reforms. The Sheriff's Association, I, I'm being truthful. The Sheriff's Association has not signed on to any of the reforms that we've tried to do to address criminal justice reform. That is not a new concept. The Sheriff's Association depends on some of the dollars that come from the bails that are paid. And so there's an inherent benefit to keeping cash bail, and that has been documented already. And so, I'm not a shock that the sheriffs are opposed to bail reform. I'm not a shock that they're supposed, they're opposed to some of our sentencing reform. That's what, that, that's what their organization is structured to do because a lot of their, their jobs and facilities are run on this. That's what it is. And so if the county board.
That doesn't, that doesn't.
County board should take a moment and look at the cited reports in the report. The sheriff can respond to this, it is in writing. And if he wants to respond to what is in this report, he can argue something different. But I'll tell you two elected officials, please do not be driven by staff requests. You have to go deeper into your own reports.
Okay, we have a further question from Stephanie Furtado.
So first of all, I just want to thank you for the amount of research and the level of detail. And I also, I, I have a request, not so much for you as a group, but for the agenda-setting portion of our, of our board, is regardless of what, you know, we have this report, we have what's going on in facilities, however, the facilities, I agree, is only one part of the question. The financing and the programming are the other two parts. And at some point, we need to have that conversation. And I would like this agenda item to be on all of our agendas between now and June. Because I think that a lot of the ideas here that have been presented in this report are feasible. I said several board meetings ago that if we're going to, this is a moment for us to comprehensively think about criminal justice reform, right? I have on the strong opinion that there needs to be some sort of facility renovation. The separation issues at the down, at the, at the satellite jail make it untenable, right? I'm not saying that we need new beds, I'm saying that we need to look at the footprint of that space and how it operates. And, and think about some of the spaces for care of the, those that are incarcerated there. I, the one thing in this report that you would really have to work to convince me on is that we should house the sheriff in a lease. I've, I've been a part of enough capital projects where you throw good money into buildings, and almost in every case, I find building new, funding it properly, is better than renting or trying to restore bad buildings. And I might be alone on that, like, I know that even some people in my own party disagree with that. But that said, I want to be abundantly clear. Danielle, I think you gave a really good landscape of the different kinds of funding mechanisms that exist. What is abundantly clear in looking at our budget, however, is that even if we bonded out, we cannot facilitate that bond with the current revenue streams that we have. Anybody who says that we can is misguided. Anybody who says that a, that any sort of capital project can be realized within the revenue streams that we have are dreaming, frankly. I personally, I will just be blunt, think that this county should be home rule. I understand that I have gotten zero traction at all in that conversation. I think the second best option is the public safety sales tax. And I, the reason that I say that is because even though I do think sales tax are inherently regressive, the amount of revenue even for a sunset, it's a public safety sales tax, would allow us to deal with the needs of reimagining the satellite jail, but would also allow us to immediately, not wait till 2008, do some of the programmatic needs. Bobby talked about the idea of a one-stop shop from, to, to sort of triage the kind of services that we have in our community. There is an actual proposal on the table with a space in mind. I know Senator Bennett has put, has pledged money for that proposal. We as a county could put some of the money from a public safety sales tax to that immediately. Representative Adams is right. Other counties have viable pretrial services that we could just duplicate. We know what they look like. We, we have a very narrow amount of services that we provide for reentry. Very narrow. And I'm gonna be honest, part of that is because of the landscape of funding that we have available. It, it wouldn't be hard to expand those services in ways that, once the 2008 debt comes off the books, that even if we sunsetted a public safety sales tax, we would be able to do. Even if we built, and I am not advocating for that, the jail as it stands in the report, the additional revenue that would come from a public safety sales tax of a quarter cent, because you have to do it, you know, a quarter cent at a time, would give us the capacity to do some of these programmatic reforms. If we use the data and the, and the legislative reform that is gonna happen, I really actually believe is gonna happen with cash bail, that would even give us more capacity, right? Because we wouldn't have to service so much debt and we'd be able to pay the debt off quicker. But I think that it's important for us to think about, I think that we need to get past the false economy of doing nothing, right? We need to do something, that is abundantly clear to me. I agree with James Kilgore that the downtown jail is a hellhole. It, it keeps me up at night. I think that, but I think at this moment, when we're talking about facilities, we also frankly have a top-to-bottom criminal justice staff that are underpaid, right? We cannot keep people in, across the bottom, you know, in our county. And so thinking about how do we make sure that we retain the best people that we have also should be part of this plan. And we, if we all come together and think about how we could do this, it is possible in this moment. And I, but I totally agree with you that building cannot be the thing that's driving it. Reimagining the, the comprehensive understanding of how we think about criminal justice. And, and though, thinking about the role that the jail plays within that broader framework is important. So that, that's all I wanted to say. I know it's not really so much of a question, but I think that we as a county board have to start talking about these things now. Because if we are going to come up, either, if we don't come up with another funding mechanism, we are doing nothing. I mean, honestly, the, the cheapest thing to do is to sort of fix the downtown jail and put Band-Aids on it. I don't want to do that. But if we're going to, if we are going to have this conversation with the public in a way that's meaningful, we have to start doing it now. Because as you clearly say, it's something that would have to go to referendum, and we would need to bring the public into that conversation, and it's not happened so far.
Just, just to respond to the explicit or implicit question in that, yes. Just, just to respond to the explicit or implicit question in that, yes, and the county board and the community need to be in the driver's seat, not your architect who makes 10% off of it. You need to take the architect out of the driver's seat, and you need, you need to be in the driver's seat with us. We're inviting you into that space. We would like you to invite us into that space, and we're asking you to reduce first, that there are some very significant things that could be done. You can put together a group to convene, and, and you keep saying it's not your lane, and yet we have multiple instances in this report when you brought together the sheriff, the state's attorney, the judiciary, Aaron Ammons, sat next to Judge DeFonis, and they reimagined the jury selection process, right? Let us remember times when we've come together to do this, and let's do that with bail bond reform, because the, because the impact on your future facilities is so significant in that one change, that it doesn't make sense for you to allow the architect to continue to drive you forward on this mega boondoggle project that isn't going to pass muster with the public.
Thank you. Charles?
Real quick, because I got to go. So, what I'm going to have, my vice chair, John Rutter, he's going to take over for me. I only have one small appointment to do. So anyhow, but real quick, just one little question. Have you guys had a conversation with the sheriff at all?
I've met with, certainly, I've met with the sheriff, and I think all of them have been on the jail tour as well, and had conversations with him in building this process.
Okay, and some of that information is reflected on here?
It is, just from what people saw at, at that visitation, as well as what we've done. I'm going to pass it to Dottie, because she just went on the tour, but I want to say to you all that Payette County allowed the architects to drive them as well, and they built a lovely facility in 2012 that's darn near empty, and guess what they're doing? Is they're renting out beds to Cook County, and Cook County sent them a message just recently saying, "That's not a permanent deal," okay? So, they would be underwater and laying off staff if Cook County did not take 40 of their beds. So, so, look at what has happened.
Thank you very much. We need to continue. Aaron, do you want to call your people up for the presentation of your website? Time is limited, and we have gone over this segment, but I appreciate you all coming out, and I appreciate your words and encouragement. Stephanie, I appreciate your words as well, too. Good evening.
My name is Troy Corson. I am the owner of Image Graphics Enterprises, Inc., and this is Paul Thornhill. He's my lead programmer for our team, and of course, Aaron Ammons here, Ammons. So, what I'm going to do to make this, to expedite this, I'm going to read through the information I have. I'm going to give you a brief update on the new development of the Champaign County Clerk's website, and at the end, we'll have a brief opportunity for you guys to ask questions of us. So, I'll give you a quick company overview of Image Graphics. We've been in business for 24 years with a portfolio of clients from a variety of industries such as agriculture, engineering, education, financial, healthcare, and mass media. We provide a range of services including brand identity, print design, environmental design, digital image creation, and web development. We strive to give individual attention to each of our clients, and while developing creative marketing solutions that are affordable, our commitment to exceeding clients' expectations and providing exceptional customer service builds lasting relationships based on trust and satisfaction. The shape of the current Champaign County website, as many of you have been users of that, the website design and content is outdated and information is not easily accessible. The ability to update sections of the site are not possible, and other sections are being supported by external contractors that are not able to provide updates in a timely manner. The hosting of the website is old technology and does not have a multi-location backup or the ability to scale when the user traffic increases. Why a rebuild is necessary. Feedback from site users and Champaign County Clerk staff brought to our attention that the current website is hard to navigate and information was difficult to find, and if you've been on the site, you probably realize that. The Champaign County Clerk's office website was, or the Cook County Clerk's web, office website was provided as an example of a quality, quality governmental website, because it is easy to navigate and information is clear and precise, and that's where we're going. New technology and hosting, a built-in content management system, and added search functionality, and more intuitive navigation, and updated accessibility standards are necessary to convert the current website into a more useful tool for users and site administrators. The web platform selected, based on the needs of the Champaign County Clerk's new website, the Drupal website platform was selected. Drupal is the number-one platform for web content management among global enterprises, governments, higher education institutions, and NGOs. Flexible and highly scalable, Drupal publishes a single website or shares content in multiple languages across many devices. Technology and business leaders transform content management into powerful digital solutions with Drupal, backed by one of the world's most innovative open-source communities. Tesla, the NCAA, the Australian government, the Emmy Awards, NASA, Pfizer, and Mattel are just a few of the many companies and organizations that use Drupal as their website An overview of improvements that will be implemented into the new site. For the user experience, the new design will be more contemporary and visually appealing. Site accessibility will be updated to the current WCAG 2.0 standards. WCAG 2.0 refers to Web Content Accessibility Guidelines, which are published by the Worldwide Consortium's Web Accessibility Initiative. The Web Content Accessibility Guidelines, WCAG 2.0, provide recommendations for making web content more accessible. Content will be more concise and better organized in the new website. The addition of the rotating informational banner on the homepage will be used to inform and direct users. A red alert graphic bar option will be added for important website announcement, announcements. The dropdown selection options are based on web analytics and user feedback. Site navigation will be more intuitive and not repetitive. Search function will be added to all pages. Feedback submission will be added to gather information from users to improve the functionality and content of the website. The hosting will be done on Amazon Web Services, which allows for 99.9% uptime and can scale based on user traffic to improve access speeds. The website content management system, that CMS incorporated into the site, allows the Champaign County Clerk's staff to easily control the content on the site and the ability to delegate levels of web content access to staff members. Now, this is a brief report on how we got where we're at and where we're going through many conversations with the Champaign County Clerk's staff. We made several of these decisions, and some of their, a lot of their feedback from users that have been on the website and have had some issues that have been mentioned in this brief presentation. At this point, I'll allow people to ask questions, and we'll try to answer those as quickly so you guys can get out of here.
Chris Thor?
Thank you. I heard you said that some of this is open source software. How much of that is open source?
Hundred percent.
Does that, does that pose some problems for security? And, oh, second part of the question, have you consulted with our IT people to determine whether this can be secured in a way so that we don't have a problem as the public health service just did?
So, the, the world's perspective on open source is that it provides a much more secure platform than privatized proprietary support, because it's sort of backed by the entire world, and everybody cycles through and resecures it on a daily basis. Doesn't have to be funded. So, the general rule is that open source is a better source. And what was the other question?
I asked of how this fit within county's information technology security.
Yeah, so one of the approaches that we took with this relationship was, so one of the problems that they ran into is they outsourced a previous, the previous website, and they sort of lost that sort of contact. So, we've taken more of a partnership approach, and that we're working very closely with the IT department, so that they have ownership of the code base and the architecture whenever we're done. So, I'd say by the time, they're, they're half owners of it right now, yeah.
To follow up, you said half owners?
I'm the other half, or we're the other half, and they're, they're half and we're half. I'm saying we're working together as partnerships, and this one, it's not an agency. We walk away when we hand back some package to them.
Okay, so they have total control over all of the content updating and so forth, and that we can choose another vendor or system at a later time if we so desire.
Absolutely. That's another one of the benefits of the open-source platform, is that this is not a custom build. We follow best practices. We follow all of the documentation that's out there that you could hire basically off the street, and they would be able to come figure out how this is built and be able to support it. So, you should never run into that problem again.
And, as he said, as Paul said, we are working with Andy and Ray Sean here on staff with the county clerk to not only explain what we're developing, but also to train them along the way, so we can hand this over to them. We will be able to support as needed, but the plan is that we turn the site over to them, and they take it over and have full control. And the content management system that's built into Drupal allows your basic staff members, if giving acts, given access through password and user IDs to the backend or the administrative site portion of the website, they will be able to control the content. And there's different ways that we can determine the access level that a person gets on the website. So, there will be a top-tier person, then it'll work down, and, and they can distribute the responsibilities in that way.
John Rutter?
So, I know there's some, with the current website, there's some functionality things that are either turned off or not working and everything. So, what's your timeline for this? I just, I know some constituents have been asking for some different things as far as access to different voting things. Statement of economic interest isn't available now online, so it's, I, it's not a really good time, but I'm just curious when all this is going to be fixed. There's a lot of functionality from constituents and people in this room that want to get those things going. Thanks, Troy.
So, what we're doing is we're starting from scratch on the website. We're not fixing the current website, so it'll have a totally different look. It's built under a different, as we said, a content management system using Drupal. Some of the things that you have mentioned will be fixed in the new website. There are portions of the site that will be more timely. The hope is that towards the end of April, we will actually start uploading content to the new website, but that will take some time, because that's going to be a combination of adding content to the site and also a training period for the staff members here in the clerk's office, and also that allows us an opportunity to work out any bugs before it actually goes live. So, this site is being developed currently. Nobody knows, you know, where it's at, but once it gets to a point where we can train the staff members to take on this task, again, like I said, hopefully by the end of April, with this being an election year, it has been a little more difficult just to interact with some of the staff members, because there's a lot going on here in the office, and we understand that. But we also want to give you guys a great product in the end, and we don't want to make any shortcuts. So, you know, we, we, it may take a little longer than anticipated, but at the same time, what you're going to have is greatly improved on what you're seeing today.
Are there any board member comments? Chris? No? Aaron?
First of all, I want to thank you all for allowing IG to come up a little earlier on the agenda. I do appreciate that. The custom build that we ran into when I was elected caused us quite a few problems from the very beginning, and so this is an upgrade for us. We think it's going to be a lot more accessible, and we appreciate the support of the board, because I know that there was a lot of work that we had to do to, to, to sort of, I guess, solidify and secure the funds to do this. So, we are working diligently to get it out as early as possible, but we want to make sure that it's, that it's clear, it's concise, and it's going to be accessible and easily user-friendly, basically, is what I'm trying to get at. So, I wanted to, to thank you all for, for your support in pushing this. The purpose of me bringing this to you, of course, we've already secured the funds to do it. I want to keep you in the loop. I want to keep you informed about what we're doing, what we're doing with the taxpayers' dollars, and how it's going to affect them and benefit them in the long run. So, that's, we didn't have to do this presentation. We wanted to do this presentation to share with you what we're doing with the dollars that you have allowed us to, to use. I wanted to take a minute, again, if you all had anything further, please share it. I just wanted to also update you on a couple of things that, around the coronavirus that we're doing before I get out of your way, so if there were any other questions for IG. All right, thank you both. We'll talk to you all soon.
Thank you for coming out, and thank you for waiting.
Just quickly, because right now, we all know how serious this is. We have nursing home facilities and assisted living facilities that we have as voting locations, and so we are in contact with them right now. I am talking with the, the rest of the admin staff to see whether or not we're going to make a decision to not use those facilities. Of course, the timing is, is really, is not helping any of us at this particular point, but we don't want to jeopardize the, the safety and security of our seniors in some of these facilities. So, we are trying to make a decision to see how we could possibly reroute folks or to choose different locations. So, I'll be talking to those nursing homes and those assisted living facilities here tomorrow again. I've been in, in contact with them already. We have election judges that are scheduled to go out Friday and Monday to these facilities, so we're trying to do whatever we can to limit the possibility of the spread of this virus. All of our early voting locations, we've sent hand sanitizer, Lysol wipes, Lysol spray, anything that we could to try to, to limit the spread of the virus, giving them clear instructions not to use, to share pens and things like that, to wipe down the laptops, wipe down the flat surfaces, everything that we possibly can to try to share with them that they can, if they want to, they can wear a mask, they can wear gloves, whatever it may be to make them feel good, and make sure that we try to do whatever we can to keep the public safe. The other polling locations, the other 83 polling locations, we just went out and bought as much hand sanitizer, all those same things for all of those locations, so when people come in, they will have that opportunity to keep their hands free of any bacteria and also to, to wipe down those surfaces. One of the things that I've, I'm thinking about, we've, I've talked to some other clerks around the, of the, the state and the County Clerks Association, many of them are pushing for more vote by mail, and I think that's a good idea. I'm instructing my staff, we're going to be using gloves, we're going to be trying to do whatever we can, because we don't know what individuals, what sort of viruses they might have as they were at home working on their, their ballots. So, we're trying to be safe in the office as well as protecting the public. So, I will, I am asking the voters, the taxpayers, to consider the vote by mail option. Now, it's important that I get you all to understand, as we go down that, that road, I know there's lots of conversations, a lot of different reasons why those conversations are taking place about the vote by mail process. I want you all to know very clearly, the number of vote by mail ballots that someone may receive, right, is not the thing that you should pay the most attention to. The thing that is most important is the security process, is the check on the backend. Let's say, for instance, someone who's in Florida wants to order a ballot, or someone overseas, if they contact us and say, "We didn't receive that ballot," we're going to send them another ballot. It's nothing new for there to be multiple ballots, vote by mail ballots, in the area, in the county, across the country. There's nothing new about that. It's not ideal, and I'm not telling, telling you all that every single voter in Champaign County who's got multiple ballots got it because of that reason. There are some things that we're working out. You all talked about the website and the vote by mail link being unattainable, inaccessible. So, there's some, there's various different reasons why people got multiple ballots, but that is, that should not alarm you. What should be the focus is, on the backend, even right now, there's a Democratic and Republican judge in my office right now processing vote by mail ballots. We have 1,090 ballots that have been returned to my office already, and we've had about almost 3,000 requests. So, we should not be alarmed by that vote by- Vote by mail is still an option, a very good option for those who don't want to come into a polling location where there may be lots of people. To individuals who are concerned about access to voting, we heard Mr. Hartwick speak tonight. 1,800 people, almost 1,900 people have voted at this location, 1776 East Washington, where he sat tonight, and we were open until 7:00 PM. So I hope he took advantage of the opportunity of walking around the corner to go and cast his vote. 1,800 people have voted at the Illini Union, and we just opened seven other locations Monday for people to get at. So there's so many different ways for people to vote. I really hope that folks will take advantage of that. So that's all I really wanted to share with you all right now. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Jim and then Kyle?
Okay, back to the ballot, mail ballots, because this is a concern, why you had a problem getting that ballot in the first place, but also the military ballots that you're really addressing, trying to address, that they're getting them and they're getting them on time and they're being returned. And if they, if someone does have three ballots, I don't know why they try to return three ballots, what of the three ballots when they come back keeps you from putting all, opening them all three up? Or the judges, if they come in at different times, want to tell the public, what stops you from putting all three of them in the box and counting all three ballots?
Well, well, the new voter registration program that we have, and even the old one, to be quite honest, will alert you that this individual has already returned a ballot. So part of the problem with the old, with the website that we have now, because the individuals couldn't make those requests through the website, the website would have stopped you from making more than one request, right? So the new website will help, will prevent that from happening. But now the security on the backend is when that Democrat and that Republican election judge sit down to process that VBM, they will scan that vote by mail, that envelope, and it will show up whether or not this person has already received one or already returned one. And if they've already returned one, then we just simply spoil the other ones. We've had one individual so far send two in. We caught it, we spoiled it, and they can only get one ballot through. That's why we have a Democratic and Republican election judge sit there the entire time to watch that, to go through that process, to scan those ballots and to check to make sure that nobody's getting more than one ballot through. So they were all sent out on time. I have not heard, I guess unless the staff has seen something that I haven't, I have not heard any complaints about any of the military votes overseas.
Kyle?
Besides Clark Lindsey, you have other nursing home voting sites?
Yeah, so the Glenwood in Mohammed is an assisted living facility. There's one in Rantoul as well, I can't remember the name of it, but there's probably three or four of them that we have and that we're going to have to make some decisions about. We have not heard from any of them, none of them. In fact, Clark Lindsey just called us earlier this week and said that they were on. It's me looking at this from a leadership perspective. I think all of us as elected officials, looking at this situation, trying to minimize any potential spreading of this virus. So I'm just trying to be, to err on the side of caution, to be abundantly cautious here.
Thank you very much. Are there any further questions? Stephanie?
Can you, if there is any changes, could you just let us know what those are?
Absolutely.
And in particular, for the county board members who represent those areas, if, I mean, let us all know, but specifically them, in the case if there is, if one of the nursing home decides that it's not, you know, feasible, just so that we could help get the word out.
I would definitely be turning to you all to help spread the word. Of course, you all know we're just a few days away from the 17th, so any of these changes at this point will, it'll sort of be an emergency. So I will need the assistance of all the county board members and all elected officials and citizens, period, to help spread the word and do it in an accurate way. Okay?
Thank you, Aaron, for the update on the coronavirus and your precautions at the voting polls.
Thank you.
Now we have our number, item number seven, county board comments. Mike Ingram?
Just real quick, wanted to let everybody know about an event. It's a fundraiser on the 11th of April at Poor Brothers in downtown Champaign will be the Mike Ingram Third Tier Karaoke Invitational. And that will be raising money for the University of Illinois Women's Resources Center as a place that has to help people deal with some of the most extreme trauma or just dealing with lecherous people on campus. I figured it was a good place to direct some money. But we will have county board members, we will have candidates, we will have local musicians, local celebrities, a state's attorney, perhaps even a county clerk participating. If we, if we raise, I've set a goal of $2,500, if we go over $2,500, I will for the first time in my entire life sing a Nickelback song, so.
Thank you very much for that communication. Are there any further communications from the board? Seeing none, and then Kyle Patterson, Social Justice, Justice and Social Services.
All right, well, the presentations earlier kind of fit into this category, so we actually don't have anything that's specifically under this agenda item besides the monthly reports. There is the Bureau's Grants Reentry Financial Report and the Midyear Report, which we received a presentation on. If anybody doesn't have any questions or comments on any of that, that's all I got.
Great, thank you. Next, Jim, Finance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight I bring before you item C9A, line one, Budget Amendment 20-0008, Fund 080 General Corporate, Two Departments 077, Zoning and Enforcement, Increased Appropriations of $7,741, Increased Revenue Zero. The reason is they want to reencumber the IEMA Planning Grant Funds received in FY2019 for the Champaign County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan Update Project to update in fiscal year 2020. Is there such a motion? Ms. Fortano, second, Mr. Thorson, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion passes. Item A2, Budget Amendment 20-0009, Fund 104 Early Childhood Fund, Two Departments 601 Childcare Program, Increased Appropriations of $698,511, Increased Revenue $698,511. This amendment is a result of additional state funding to support two preschool ages three to five classrooms for 34 children for 10 hours per day. This will address a portion of the outstanding waiting list for preschool childcare services and the ongoing need for families that work or are going to school. Programming will take place at the West Champaign location. Is there such a motion? I can't see. Mr. Tinsley, second by Ms. Taylor. Is there discussion? Mr. Esri?
Yes, I'm just wondering, is this one of the grants that is possibly going to be affected by lack of the CAFR being done?
I can't specifically answer that other than I know that the grants are still being held up unless the CAFR was completed today, and I will ask that to the auditor here in a minute. So I, as I understand it, grants are not being released until we release the CAFR to those, the state and federal agencies that require them for the release. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Okay, motion passes. Okay, Item B, Treasurer, Resolution Authorizing the Execution of a Deed of Conveyance of the County's Interest or Cancellation of the Appropriate Certificate of Purchase on Real Estate, Permanent Parcel Number 20-09-10-426-002. Is there such a motion? Mr. Clifford, second, Mr. Esri, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item B2, Resolution Authorizing the Cancellation of the Appropriate Certificate of Purchase on a Mobile Home, Permanent Parcel Number 20-032-0025. Is there such a motion? Mr. Clifford, second, Mr. Esri, sorry, Mr. Clemmons, you'll get the next one. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Motion passes. Now if it's, if... Yes, I'm going to do the next one's omnibus. Thank you, Ms. Court, that's what I was going to say. I can do the next, number three, four, five, and six as omnibus, and I, be patient because I'll read them all. Okay, A Resolution Authorizing the County Board Chair to Assign a Mobile Home Sales, or Mobile Home Tax Sale Certificate of Purchase for Permanent Parcel Number 15025-0513. Resolution Authorizing the County Board to Assign a Mobile Home Tax Sale Certificate of Purchase to Permanent Parcel Number 30-054-0009. Resolution Authorizing the County Board Chair to Assign a Mobile Home Tax Sale Certificate of Purchase for Permanent Parcel Number 30-058-0078. And finally, a resolution authorizing the County Board Chair to Assign a Mobile Home Tax Sale Certificate of Purchase for Permanent Parcel Number 30-064-0015. Is there such a motion? Mr. Thorson, second, Mr. Clemmons, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Motion passes. Okay, Auditor's Month Report is on the website and has been uploaded for January of 2020. Update on accruals, 2019 accruals, Ms. Ogden? Okay, George is going to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Danos, for being here.
Yeah, we, we close the year typically at the end of February, and so revenues that are recorded out of period then, then require this amendment because they're being accrued to the proper year, of course, which is last year. So, and there are a variety of those revenues, some were sales tax and so forth, but of course, we helped the treasurer's office in bringing out those cash receipts and now you have them finalized.
So am I to understand that they're done?
You're referring to those accruals?
The 2019 accruals are done?
That there will never be another accrual? I can't say that.
Okay, so, so are you asking for an authorization to extend the 2019 accruals or just you're updating us?
It's funny how, because of the...
Because I think by board rule, we're February 28th, I thought.
Right.
By financial, by finances.
Right, right, right. Any accrual that we bring would require your authorization, yeah.
From this point forward. Okay, I think we technically, by state statute, have till the end of this month accrue something back, so we just, you're just going to bring us anything that you get from this point forward.
Correct.
Perfect. Questions for the auditor? Mr. Patterson?
Are there's reference to grants being held up earlier? Could you speak to specifically what that involves?
Sure, the, the most sensitive grants, of course, are the ones that are overseen by the federal government, and those include early childhood. They like to see the CAFR. I don't know specifically what deadlines or what recent correspondences have had because I haven't, that hasn't been brought to me. I haven't been here this last week because of my cough, so I don't have anything really updated since I talked to you at the last county board. Go ahead.
Are they actively having money withheld? Like, what does that mean?
You know what, I wanted to ask, if I sat next to Tammy, I would have been discussing whether there was any actual cash flow, cash flow issue, but I don't think so. I'm sure I would know it.
Yeah, as I, as I understand, and Mr. Summers, you, you were also on RPC. I mean, all grants that, that are for FY2020 are being held and subject to the receipt of the CAFR. So, you know, whether that's a cash flow, I have not heard in an RPC meeting that there is a cash flow issue. It's just grant funds are not being received, receipt and released until that, that receipt. And they can't by law. I mean, that's not, that's not somebody being mean, that's, that's a requirement of the grant is to be able to see the comprehensive annual financial report.
Right, and I don't know what the dates were for the initial release. We may not be jumping over it yet, but I will check in with them tomorrow because I would like to beat that, beat them to the punch. I mean, if they were expecting it by a certain day and the CAFR is delivered and they still get it, it's just something where they would have been pre-approved for two months, instead they're pre-approved for two days, but nevertheless, the dispersment occurs at the same date.
Yeah, I do, I mean, at least, again, regurgitating what we heard at, at the meeting at RPC, that was due, I mean, technically it's September 30th, but they wanted to see it, they made promises to have it by the end of the year and we still don't have it. So, I mean, that's, there, there's serious concern at RPC because if we go back into a pool and have to compete for this money, which we haven't had to do for years, I mean, you know, it's, it's a competitive grant process. I'm sure there's somebody waiting that, that might have a stronger case. Now, we don't know that, obviously that's, but you don't want to get to that level. So that's why I asked that question. Mr. Rosales, you have a...
Yes, I'm also part of RPC and I've received a letter unanimously signed by every member of RPC emphasizing that I should go ahead and appoint immediately overdue the treasurer's office. And we have also asked you, Danos, to go ahead and submit those CAFRs way back in December, and you came to talk to us in January, and we still have no CAFRs to date, not January and not February, and we're into March, and they're putting all that additional pressure on the treasurer. And the treasurer, current treasurer or current interim treasurer up to today, couldn't come up with any answer to, to the RPC board. So they wrote this letter to me saying, "Geraldo, you have to do it and you have to do it now." That's why I jumped on and did it at the COW.
Yes.
Or special meeting instead of at, on the 19th, at the next county board meeting.
Yeah, I, I think that the interaction between the treasurer's office and the auditor's office is the biggest variable in our, in our having a particularly late CAFR this year. I mean, that's the big change, that's the big difference. So I appreciate that you expedited the nomination of the new treasurer, and I did meet her out in the hall after she was signed in. So I look forward to giving her a broader introduction tomorrow.
And it was record, in record time, 30 days instead of 60.
Very good.
Mr. Summers?
George, could you remind me at what point your office turned over the information to our outside auditors for the CAFR?
It's a back and forth process. See, there's, the, I thought it was the day before your emergency meeting.
It was, I believe. And that was the 14th, 17th?
Yeah, 13th and 17th come to mind, excuse me, 13th and 20th.
Let's look it up for you so we can quote the correct... We had the meeting on the 20th, and my recollection was that the information had been turned over the previous week to the outside auditors. So what we're basically waiting on is for the outside auditors to provide that. Your, your office has provided the information, it's there, we're waiting on the outside auditor to complete it and, and show it basically to the feds and to other folks that would like to see it.
Yeah, once, once they've got their opinion, I will polish it up for publishing, repaginate, make sure that the page references are okay, and that's a very quick, a day or two process.
Mr. Rosales?
It was my understanding that the outside auditors were still cranking numbers for 2018, the last two months.
Yeah.
Which was prior to the treasurer coming in in 2019. Have they returned that already to you?
No, the CAFR, there's a single CAFR, and that's what we're awaiting.
2018?
Yes. Now, that's normal, let me tell you something. No Fortune 500 company has their 10K out, okay, and they're accelerated filers and they have great staff, a great number of staff, I should say, great staff, but I only have five. So, yeah, I mean, that's the way it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Dana, Danos, for being here. Okay, under the county executive, we've got an ordinance establishing a property assessed clean energy pace program in the county of Champaign, designating a pace area providing for property assessments and approved related materials. It says here that it's going to be distributed at the meeting. I was informed at the beginning of the meeting that the state's attorney does not have the ordinance done yet. So we do have, we do have the ability, this is a program that's... So, um, we do have, we do have the ability, this is a program that's not gonna cost the county any money, but what it does is it designates some, a special energy program. We do have Doug Altenberger here in the, in the, uh, audience who we've kept here and asked that he could speak. He is the first applicant that we've had and so I might give him a few minutes to discuss his project and what, how pace, um, would help and help a lot of businesses of, for, uh, clean energy. So, Mr. Altenberger?
Uh, first of all, thank you for, um, inviting me. I met with Darlene and Jim in the finance committee, um, a few weeks ago. We brought in, uh, Brad Fletcher with the Illinois Fin- Finance Authority, uh, as well as Chris Kane, um, uh, under his, with his group as well. Basically, the pace program, uh, provides, uh, for example, buildings of my sort, the Marriott Aloft Hotel, to reduce our carbon, uh, footprint. So the pace program is, allows, um, a developer like myself to, um, provide water efficiency, um, also reduce, um, a- again, our electrical utilities, things of that nature. These typical things are what you would call like a green building. Uh, this is sort of where all hotels, I know for us, uh, this is where it's going. The Marriott is very supportive of this program. We spent some time with Darlene and her staff to make sure that, uh, again, that it wasn't anything that would be, uh, extra, uh, from a personnel perspective, they'll put, uh, added bodies. And second of all, uh, we've talked to Jim and some of the other, um, board members to make sure that from, uh, your perspective, it doesn't put any pressure on your budget. So with those two components and then allowing our building to be green, which costs a little, uh, costs a significant more dollars, but on the other hand, in the long run, it helps me as well and I'm able to finance those, uh, through this program. So I always felt as a developer, it was a win-win for everybody. And it also provides you guys, uh, your board with the capacity in the future to provide this program, not only to developers, uh, in, in Chic- in Champaign or Abana, but anywhere in the county. So our, our program I proposed was to do sort of a pilot program. It's done, uh, it's starting to come down. It's in, uh, Lake County, Cook County, uh, City of Peoria is doing it as well, Kankakee is looking at it. So it's a pretty, uh, cool, uh, program through the federal government. The state approved it last summer and currently now, a lot of the, um, Champaign, I mean, a lot of the, uh, local counties are looking at this as well. But again, I think it's an exciting program and it's, uh, it's, it's something that, uh, again, it, it makes us a building that's, that's green and it allows us to, uh, helps us, uh, again, with our carbon footprint.
So Doug's project is one that's very interested in, already pretty well in progress in terms of building design and those kinds of things, so he's looking to get this passed fairly quickly. There's another project down at Research Park, it's a Fox development that's also interested. They've already broken ground, but they're interested also in participating. Basically, it's a way for them to finance the green parts of what they're doing at a lower interest rate and over a longer term, so they're able to put those sort of amenities into the buildings, which are a little bit more expensive than the traditional ways of doing energy. So that's, it will, it will not cost the county anything. Um, the, there's potential in the future that if the county would choose to, we can run the payments through the treasurer's office. Right now, we think that's probably not a good idea for a number of reasons. But, um, we have, the, the lender basically is willing to do that as well. So, um, we're just, we're asking for approval. Do you wanna do approvals of this tonight or how do you wanna do this?
So, so we have the opportunity because it really doesn't affect the county financially at all to either say we can give Darlene and, um, our state's attorney the ability to wrap up the ordinance part of it and just let them, let them finish it up, or we can hold it off and see if they can get it done by the county board meeting, or I guess ultimately we could wait till... Yeah, Darlene says it'll likely be next, next month, which pushes another thirty, well, another forty-five days because it'd have, be final action at the board meeting. So, I'm, I'm here at the pleasure of the board to ask for what your, I would be fine with letting Darlene and Julia wrap up the ordinance part of it because they're gonna put it in what, what needs to be in the ordinance, the state's attorney's office will put in the ordinance. And again, financially for us, i- it doesn't, it doesn't cost us anything and it doesn't. I think it gives us a leg up to say that we are piloting this green program to, for new, new places and I think in anywhere in Ch- or anywhere in the state of Illinois, Champaign ought to be a leader on that. And we've, we've backed solar, we've backed other, other forms of renewable energy, so, Ms. Furtado?
Yeah, I concur with that. Maybe just whenever it is done, you could put it on the agenda as a point of information so we could see the final document, but I'm fine with that.
So let me also say there are, um, I'm potentially seeing that this would be a potential tool that, like, for example, up in Ran Tool, the new sports facility might be interested in using. There's other buildings that are coming up online that potentially would be interested. If we do it as a pilot project, we can do it this way. Um, if we're gonna do it as a larger project and include the whole entire county, we probably would want to do an RFP for the program manager function, which has a fee attached to it, but for now, the lender can do that just on one or two projects. So that's kind of our, I would bring it back at that point because we would probably wanna make it a countywide big thing that people could apply for.
Ms. Furtado, would you offer that as a motion?
I'll second it.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll, I'll restate the motion that, that we give, we give authority to the county executive and the state's attorney's office to, to finish up the final portions of the ordinance. It was moved by Ms. Furtado, it was seconded by Mr. Clemmons, and that would come with a caveat that you would give, you would send to the board members at the time when it's finished so we can see the completed project. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, we're down to item E. A request for travel expenses by county board member Mike Ingram. Is there such a motion? Ms. Furtado, is there a second? Mr. Summers? Ms. Furtado?
Um, I noticed that this doesn't have a dollar amount, so I did the calculations of the mileage at the federal rate, which is fifty-seven point five cents, so that would be a hundred and four sixty-five. The hotel was ninety-six oh five, so I'd like to just amend the motion so that it says expenses of two hundred dollars and seventy cents.
Is there a second? Mr. Stor, discussion on the amendment? I was...
What, what was that, two hundred and seventy or two hundred?
Two hundred dollars and seventy cents.
Okay.
And go ahead, Mr. Ingram.
I was just gonna give a, a little bit of a, I'll make it quick 'cause it's nine ten. So the seminar actually ended up being pretty great. The one thing that I was really focused on that I, uh, was sad that wasn't there because of the snow, um, one of the lawyers did not make the trip, um, and that was the person who's gonna talk more about, uh, cannabis things. So this was all about new, um, employment laws and things that had come through the state, um, that might impact county, um, governments and county boards. So we didn't get a ton of that, uh, we did get the packet that, um, that that lawyer would've presented, but, um, there was a lot of great stuff about, uh, the various things that have changed for the, uh, for the new year. One of the most thing, uh, one of the things that I thought was actually the most interesting, um, and that I think maybe we need to be taking a look at at some point, um, is, uh, we, the afternoon was basically a training of trainers of, uh, for sexual harassment policies. So it would be anybody who was a supervisor that was, uh, asked to, um, pass that information on to their, uh, to their employees. And, uh, so, uh, the person who was putting it on was also, uh, very, uh, wanted to, wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that county elected officials do not have to, uh, do not have to take these, uh, sexual harassment trainings. So that means that anybody that we elect at the countywide level, whether it be auditor, whether it be sheriff, anybody like that, um, is not beholden to the law that says that, um, uh, 'cause, 'cause they're technically not, uh, technically not employees. So, um, but if there was an action that had to come from that, uh, we, the board are responsible for that. So I, I have a couple of ideas that I think I'll be trying to present, um, that might help us mitigate a little bit of that, but I just thought that was an interesting tidbit, um, that we as a state require it, but, uh, not of our elected officials at the county level. So, anyway, that's just a little bit of a, if anybody would like any of the information that I got, I'd be happy to forward on the packets. It's pretty interesting.
Okay, discussion? This is on the amendment? Yeah, there's, it was amended. Okay, no discussion on the amendment, so we're gonna discuss, or we're gonna vote on this as the amendment to, um, add the, the total cost of two hundred dollars and seventy cents. So all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we go back and, I guess we go back and discuss the main motion and there were, looked like there were two people that had discussion for it.
Was this, I don't remember the travel policy. Was this pre-approved by Darlene or Geraldo or I can't remember how we did, wrote the policy? But what...
Microphone, please.
Mike, you wanna explain that?
Yeah, um, so, uh, the opportunity for me to go came up later than, I, I wasn't actually gonna be able to go. When I found out that, uh, a meeting of mine had changed, I reached out, um, to everybody and just said, "Hey, uh, I don't know if this is soon enough to get, uh, to get done now," which was, I think, right ahead of our last board meeting. And they said, "No, just, uh, give us all the information." So it came up, uh, a little bit later than I expected it to.
I, I thought we wrote the policy that you or Darlene could approve it. That's where I'm confused.
The policy is that he has to bring it up to the board and then he's board approval, total board approval, prior to leaving. And he will have to get guest estimates of the hotel mileage.
No, I, I, I thought it was the other way. That's fine. I'm just thinking...
And it's not just our approval, but it's the entire board approval.
But I thought we, I thought we wrote something in there so in these circumstances, he could still get it approved, but I'll go back and reread it. Thank you.
So why is this on the agenda?
Excuse me? Because it's a budget amendment that we have to approve.
But it should've been approved before.
It's just a request, it's not a budget amendment.
Should've been approved before.
It's an expenditure that the board has to approve. The board has to approve any travel expenses by members of the board.
That's correct. That's, it has to be approved by the board because it's travel expenses by board members.
But he's already...
Right, you, you could, you could choose to not reimburse him. I mean, that's, that's the choice. This is a yes or no. This is a really binary decision here, yes or no. Do you want to approve it or not? Maybe? And there's no abstention either.
Do you have, do you have offhand, Darlene, the balance of this two thousand dollars for board use? After this?
Um, I don't know how much is left in the budget, no, but I, I believe there's this much left.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Summers?
With the relative youth of this board, I think any additional education that board members can get will benefit the whole board. I wish we had a budget that was larger than what we have in this current fiscal year because honestly, I look around here and I, I can speak for myself, there are a lot of areas where I could get a lot more information, I could be a better board member if I was taking the time to attend different seminars. I encourage everybody at this table to do so and I think to not approve this sends a message that, well, we really shouldn't be going to meetings. And I, I don't think that's a positive position for this board to take.
Any further questions? Mr. McGuire, did you have your...
Yeah. Well, I, I think that's the point, though. That's why, I think that's why you should come to the board and, and ask for approval before you actually decide to go on and the, um, to get the training because there's only two thousand dollars and certain people are going and then coming and ask for the money and nobody has a opportunity to discuss whether the board thinks it's something that the board should do. I mean, I, he's asking for, they're deciding for everybody else before anybody else has a decision of whether they wanna do it. So if an important, uh, training comes up, we won't have any money left over for that person to be able to do it.
Mr. Tinsley?
Can we decide now? And by me calling the question?
Yeah, well, if you say call the question, yes, we can. But you have to request to call the question.
I would like to recall, I would like to call the question.
Okay.
I'm not gonna roll call it, though, but...
Uh, Mr. McGuire rolled called it, though.
Is there a second to the roll call? Okay. Okay, Mr. Tinsley, you're confusing me. Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Oh, roll call, my god.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richter?
Yes.
Stor?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thorson?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wolken?
Yes.
Clemmons?
Yes.
Clifford? Covert? Esri?
Yes.
Fears?
Yes.
Furtado?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Ingram?
No.
McGuire?
I'll vote with Mike, no. I didn't want him to be alone.
Rosales?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, motion passes. All right, I have no other business, there is no chair's report, items to be placed on the consent agenda. Items nine A, one and two, items nine B, one through six. With that, I turn the microphone back over to our chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jen. Excellent job. Policy personnel and appointments, I guess, uh, we don't have, uh, Dr. Young here, so we'll give it to John Richter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item A one, the monthly HR report from the county executive is attached. Item two A, supervisor of assessments. I seek a motion to approve the county, uh, executive's appointment of Paula Bates, who was reappointed to a term four four twenty twenty to four three twenty twenty-four for the supervisor of assessments. Right here, Ms. Taylor, first, Mr. Ingram with the second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Uh, let's see, item B, we moved up, there's no other business. Under the chair's report for information only are the, uh, appointments that are expiring between March and May twenty twenty. Um, also at the county website, the county executive, the full list of appointments that are available or openings that are there, county website. Uh, designation of items to be placed on the consent agenda, A two A, no other business for me. Mr. Chair, back to you.
We stand adjourned if there's no other further comments. Thank you all for weighing, you know, weighing out the time. Thank you.